I'd like to hear under items from citizens present from our good friends at Benedictine, who are, I know we've got Joe Wilson and Charlie, men from Chicago. Good to see you, Charlie. Please come on up and tell us what's new at Benedictine. Yes, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
Good. Good to see you, Charlie.
Good to see all the city council members and my friends as well. I apologize for sounding like a frog in a barrel this morning, but coming out of the Midwest, we're still having wintertime there, so it's an adjustment. But thank you for having me in this morning. I want to take just a couple of minutes, and first of all, thank you for the hospitality that you've shown us thus far in our two years here. Over the last couple of years, we've watched our academic program unfold and develop, and it will do so more next year. Our applications for this coming fall are up significantly, and we're doing, I think, exactly as you had hoped when you brought us in here, which was to hopefully hold on to the brain trust here, as well as bringing additional brain trust from outside the community. We're seeing our applications. This week, we picked up four or five students from California, a couple from Nevada, three or four from the western parts of the United States are really picking up for us. So I think you'll find that, as well as holding on to what we have here, the biggest challenge we face bringing these students in is, the next one will be housing, of course, because that seems to be the thing that is attracting a lot of the students, not only to go away from home, but they want that experience. And even though the Marriott has been very good partners with us, we have to take a look at the long-term benefits and what we can do to add that amenity also. We'll be adding new academic programs next year, bringing new faculty in, adding new services. The services and the space kind of go hand in hand. We're struggling right now with space and many issues because bringing, we'll be bringing in development officers, we'll be bringing in more financial aid people, we'll be bringing in more academic advisors, obviously we'll bring in more faculty. Lab space becomes an issue in many cases because of the expansion of the academic program. But the three things that students ask us, the academic program, how much does it cost, and tell us about the social life, we can all say with a very positive effect that I think that the experience that they gain by attending Benedictine is quite different. And the reason being is because, in our opinion, Mr. Mayor, what makes Benedictine special in Mesa is the fact that, I think that Mesa not only is a good community fit for us, but I also see us being very philanthropic. And that's a trait that we try to teach our students as they come through and they graduate. So to me, what makes our students quite special at Benedictine is not just the academic program, because they can receive a good education no matter where they go. But I think that they, what we try to teach them are life skills, how to make decisions with moral and ethical values that they can take into the community like Mesa, or back to their communities, whether it be California, Colorado, Nevada, Texas, Tennessee, Michigan, Illinois, wherever. But they can contribute back, because that's part of the Benedictine values. Philanthropic to us means quite different than it does most. It basically means a love and a kindness for the human spirit, and that's what we try to teach at Benedictine. In other words, do what you say you're going to do, and do it often. Make sure it's repeated. A good behavior repeated adds to value to the community, and that's really what we try to do. And because of your support for us and our investment, we feel like that we've tried to be good neighbors, we've tried to be community members, and we've tried to invest our resources as well. Over the last two years, we've invested somewhere between $5 and $6 million in our operation here. That's bringing staff in, that's building out facility, that's putting recruiters on the road, that's hiring faculty, that's adding student life and student services. We've really, we have not put one foot in and one foot out, and we continue our commitment to this community, and because we think it's the next big front for higher education. But we think that the Benedictine values are attracting, it's not just the academic program, it's what goes along outside the academic program. And I think the community speaks to that. And for that reason, my reason for asking to be on the agenda today is, we have something for each of you that we would like to present on behalf of the university. As you know, Dr. Carroll, our president, is stepping down in December of this year. We're in the middle of a search for, a national search for a new president. We also are adding in April a new chairman of the Board of Trustees. Our chairman, that has been chairman for the last 15 years, is stepping down, and we have a new chairman coming in. So it's an exciting time for us back on the main campus. But what doesn't change are the values that we have and the values that we teach. So I don't want to take any more of your time, but I would like to present something to each of you that we have on behalf of the trustees of the university, and also the president. We have... Mr. Mayor, would you be the first one, please? This award is basically a Benedictine University award that we give for outstanding service to the community. We give these very sparingly, quite honestly. This first one goes to Mr. Mayor. You embody the Benedictine values through your contributions, search for God by oneself with others, tradition of hospitality, emphasis on life, lived in balance. I'm not quite sure about that one, Mr. Mayor, but concerns for the development of each person and a commitment to the academic excellence.
You know what? Our director of television over here is telling me we're not doing great.
How's this?
You were saying...
That was really good, and we didn't even get through it?
Well, just for the record, he was saying some really nice things about me.
I really should have had my back to you all. I apologize. Why don't we turn this way?
Let's start all over again.
I only got the part "lived in balance." How about that?
I think there's cameras.
I apologize.
Left right there. All right.
Are you looking hard? Yeah, let's try this again. All right. Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Benedictine University, this is an award that we would like to give to you for the contributions you make to the community, as well as the city council members and the staff here. Because if it were not for the nucleus in this room, we would not be here. So for each of the city council members, and for you, Mr. Mayor, this award on behalf of the university trustees and Dr. Carroll, our president, for your search for God by oneself with others, tradition of hospitality, emphasis on life, lived in balance, concern for the development of each person, and commitment to academic excellence, we thank you for allowing us to be a part of your community.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Senator.
I know I speak on behalf of our, not just the city council, but the whole community, when I say we feel like we really hit the jackpot when Benedictine came to Mesa. And it's not just lip service. The Benedictine values are something that are so important to us. It's such, that's what makes you the jackpot that came to Mesa. So you're not just another university, you're very special. We appreciate it very much.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Senator.
You bet. Thank you. We appreciate that again, and good to have you here. Joe, thanks for being here all the time. Thanks for the hard work that you do. And if that didn't get picked up again, what I said is Benedictine really is a jackpot. We're doing, we really appreciate the investment in time and energy and the values that they bring to our downtown and to our community. So thanks again for all that you do. I know every council member would probably say that more strongly and more eloquently than I have, so I know that reflects the feeling of every council member here. Moving on to the next agenda item is to review the agenda for Monday's regular council meeting. So why don't we start with page two? I do know that under the first agenda item, well, not the first one, but on the first page, under liquor license, we do need to make an addition to this agenda, do we not?
Yes, Mayor and Council. We have one addition that will be coming on the agenda for Monday, and that's the Luke Greenway Post Number One American Legion. It's actually the U-Fest that will be taking place at Aquil Run on April 10th. So it's a special event, liquor license.
Okay. Thank you. So that'll be on the next version of the agenda that we see. Moving on to page three, taking action on contracts. Okay. Well, agenda items four, having to do with contracts. We have several pages of contracts. Does that work for everybody? Anything, now that you've had such, anything under agenda item four that looks interesting that we want to go up? It's all, I don't mean, it's all very interesting, and it's all good stuff. The room of people here, I'm sure, would love to tell us about every single item. There is some good stuff here. We've got bomb robots and all kinds of great stuff that we could have great presentations on. That's right. Then item five, moving on to resolutions. Five A through D. Okay, five E through K. I know on item K, this is something very interesting. Lance and Beth, would you, thank you, welcome this morning. I know you have a presentation on agenda item 5K.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Yes, this morning, we're here to talk to you about something really good. We were able to pick up some flood control grants this year to help with some of our storm drain projects. To my left is Lance Webb. He's one of our engineers, and he specializes in storm drainage. So he's going to walk you through the five IGAs that are on the agenda and the grants that come with them.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. This, what we're coming forward with is drainage improvement projects in conjunction with the flood control district and small projects program that they have. It's a program that they identify, or local municipalities identify needs within the community where we can partner with flood control, up to five projects in any given fiscal year. This year, we pursued five different projects of locations where we felt there was value, providing drainage improvements and opportunities to neighborhoods that otherwise experienced issues with drainage. So here on the slide, you'll see there's the five projects that we're putting forward is Royal Palms. Just a brief description of each of these. The Royal Palms project that we're pursuing is basically a relief line to provide some relief to some residents that live adjacent to a golf course where a retention basin backs up. That relief line would provide an opportunity to move flow south where we have additional capacity at Candlelight Park. And then here on the map, you can see Second Avenue and Solomon. This is a neighborhood that, where we have identified issues with flooding and opportunities to improve this with, again, a relief line off the main street, storm drain, and regional basin. 10th Avenue and Surryne is, again, a neighborhood just off of Mesa Drive there, where, along 10th Avenue and on Surryne, we've experienced locations where we have problems with conveyance, and we want to work on improving those. Also on that, one of those projects that we have also is 9th Avenue and Horn. Historically, this is an older part of the neighborhood within the city, a location where there's not a whole lot of street conveyance. We wanted to pursue something that could provide that conveyance through a storm drain system that can tie into our regional system down on Southern and Horn. And then Emerald Acres, I think most of you are probably familiar with that one, is a location where we are looking to optimize a system that experienced some flooding this last monsoon season. So we've put together some project costs with these, and we look to support that through the transportation, local sales tax. These are the project costs, and here's the breakout for the district contribution that they'll be providing. That contribution is only for the construction side, up to $250,000 as a 75% cost share. So here's what that project cost breakout is and what the city's estimated contribution is on that.
So this morning, this will be coming forward as part of our capital improvement program that budget will be presenting very shortly, but we wanted to get the IGAs in front of you. And I believe we have about a year to expend the funds based on the IGAs, once they're signed and executed.
So Mayor and Council, I appreciate Lance's effort and best support to get these grants. I think when we first talked about applying for these, there was some caution about whether or not the city would be, how successful the city could be in getting everything it wanted. We did. And so Lance wrote a very good grant. He was very persistent in making the case that these were important projects to help mitigate against stormwater impacts in our neighborhood. So we're grateful for that. We'll be coming to the council, and you're going to see it in the five-year CIP today, but also as part of your budget adoption. You'll notice that the projected cost for all of these projects is about 5, is $5.4 million. And we're very grateful for the grants that will come in and provide just less than $1 million of support, but we'll have to come, the city will have to come up with the additional 4.4. And we're proposing that that become a priority in our budget that will be, excuse me, proposing to you this year to be adopted by the city council. So just kind of bring that as you anticipate that those will be part of the discussions going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I know Mr. Finter has a question.
Couple of observations. Appreciate what's going on here for all of us that lived what happened down there. This is a big deal. I'm hoping we take the opportunity to get this information out in every form that we can to the community in that area. I don't know, you know, the media types or whatever, but I think people will be anxiously anticipating and very excited about what this project. Also wanted to express appreciation to Maricopa County Supervisor Steve Chukery, who was there the day with the mayor and many of the others, and saw firsthand the challenges, and gave a commitment that day that they were going to do everything possible to make sure that we had the support that we needed. But thanks to the staff for doing this, and all the folks, and I think this is a big deal. People don't realize, I think it was, for some, in different parts of the city, it was a news story, but for many people, they lived this painfully for days and weeks and months. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alex. Any, council, any other questions, comments on this? Let me just add, echo what Alex said. I know Supervisor Chukery was there, and when we sent this letter, we hand-delivered it to him and expressed the urgency of this and our hope that it would be well-received by the county flood control, and it obviously has been. I think the fact that they're contributing nearly $1 million is great. I think the fact that the city is prioritizing our spending, which is, this is a tough year to come up with a million, you know, $4.4 million for any topic, no matter how important, but I think hopefully the residents of Mesa, particularly those in the neighborhoods impacted by the flooding, can see that Mesa City Government is doing all that we can to respond to that obvious need in our community. So the other thing is, the last time I saw Lance, it was, he was up to his knees in water, standing, I think, at the intersection of, I think it was Second Avenue and Solomon, which is one of the hotspots on this. So I know this has been a big part of what you've done professionally for the last many months and so on. We appreciate the good work you've put into this.
Thank you.
So this is good news. So thank you. Okay, moving on to other agenda items. Anything else under agenda item five? Six, introduction of ordinances. Seven, taking public comment on other ordinances. Eight is subdivision plats. Nine is a notice of intention to discuss utility rates. So that'll be in a later council meeting. And then items not on consent agenda, currently there are none. Council, any other questions related to the agenda? All right. Next item on our agenda then for today's meeting is to hear a presentation and discuss proposed fiscal year 2016 through 2020 capital improvement programs, including, are we going to take these in the order on the agenda, or just all together?
Yes, Mayor. I think they're going to present the full conference. This is the five-year CIP, so we're going to highlight projects that are taking place over the next five years, and we'll talk about, we're not going to get into a lot of detail about specifically this year, but we wanted to give you a sense of what's planned for the next five years. And we just had a pretty robust discussion on stormwater, so we probably won't spend a lot of time on that one, but we wanted to cover the other areas to make sure council understands and sees that vision that we have for the next five years on capital improvements.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Wimmer. I'm the city's deputy budget director. With me today is Scott Butler. He's the city's CIP coordinator, capital improvement program coordinator. He's the other Scott Butler.
Yeah. Sorry for all the emails.
They're much more exciting than mine. Each year, as part of the annual budget process, the council approves an update to the city's capital improvement program. So we're here today to provide an overview of that, of that plan. Attached to the agenda today is a detailed list of all the projects in the capital improvement program. Today, we're just going to touch on some of those, kind of some highlights, to give you a flavor for what's in the CIP. Also, behind me, behind us today are staff members from each of the, each of the programs that can answer any of your questions that you have about specific projects. So what is a capital improvement program? It's a multi-year plan for scheduling and funding capital infrastructure needs. Now, the city of Mesa, like most municipalities, has a five-year capital improvement program. The first year of the five-year plan is appropriated as part of the annual budget. So the first year of the five-year CIP is included in the, will be included in the FY 15-16 annual budget that you'll be approving this year. And most of the projects are brought back to you in the form of construction contracts for approval throughout the year, as those construction contracts are awarded. We categorize the capital improvement program into three basic categories of projects: those that are funded, those that are planned, and then those that are future. And we differentiate those by saying that those that are funded are in the plan and have funding identified. Planned projects are in the five-year plan but don't have a specific funding source yet identified. And future projects are in the five-year plan, there's not an identified funding source, and they're also somewhat dependent on the circumstances. So whether growth takes place, or whether service demands pick up, would help determine whether those become funded, whether we find funding for those. The city's capital improvement program has a citywide scope. There are lifecycle replacement projects, so these are replacements of existing infrastructure that's at the end of its useful life. It's a lot cheaper, as you know, to replace an old water line than it is to have a water line break. So a lot of projects are replacing existing infrastructure. There's also projects in growth areas where the city, especially in the east and southeast, is expanding and growing. And also, there are projects, economic development projects that are intended to promote business development and stimulate economic growth. Now, Scott will highlight some of the specific programs and projects that are in the capital improvement program.
The first group of programs to highlight include those that, whose primary funding source is general obligation bonds. These are generally the most noticeable and are directed towards improving the quality of life in Mesa. For the parks program, this includes improvements to parks, pools, and other recreational facilities. Included in the five-year plan is approximately $28 million of park bonds, and then $7 million of general fund and other local funding sources. A few parks, project examples is the Fiesta Sports Park, located on the former site of Palo Junior High, Pioneer Park improvements, and also the Rio Salado Pathway, the northwest section of Mesa. Included in the budget proposal is a staff recommendation to reschedule timing of some parks projects due to property access issues and available operational resources to maintain those parks. Those parks include Eagles Park, which is the former site of Mesa Junior High, Greenfield, Monterey, Signal Butte and Elliott, as well as Climen Park. Next is public safety, which highlights projects included in the police and fire programs, as well as public safety, the public safety communication network. Included in the five-year plan is approximately $32 million of public safety bonds, and then $3 million of general A few project examples is the construction of facilities in order to relocate Fire Station 203, the Mesa Regional Dispatch and Emergency Operations Center, and the police holding Next is the streets program. These projects that are proposed influence the safe flow of traffic and enhance the experience for pedestrians and other forms of transportation in Mesa. The types of projects include major arterial roadway improvements and neighborhood street improvements. In the streets program, we leverage several types of funding in order to maximize the number of projects that we're able to complete, including general obligation bonds, local street sales tax, grant dollars, in order to enhance the quality of life for A few project examples in the streets program is the second phase of Mesa Drive, bound approximately by 8th Avenue and Main Street, including improvements to the intersection of Broadway Road. First Avenue, various arterial reconstructions, and then Phase Two of the Fiesta District improvements. In conjunction with these street projects, there is also identified at the time any utility infrastructure improvements that need to be made in order to maximize the project and capture any economies of scale that can be done by completing those improvements at the same time. As discussed earlier, stormwater projects that have been identified, leveraging those grant funds in order to address a need within the city. The next group of projects and programs that we'll highlight are those that primarily use utility revenue bonds as a funding source. In general terms, these projects reinforce the reliability of utility infrastructure to minimize service disruptions and address, in addition, also addressing growth needs and any economic development opportunities. In the electric program, there's approximately $25 million of utility bonds, and then $2 million of local funding sources. The types of projects that are included in the electric program include undergrounding of electric utilities, improvements to the substations that serve the service area, as well as some conversions of retired substations to parks. Proposed projects in the natural gas address needs within the city service area, as well as the Magma Service Area, located in the southwest area of the valley. It includes approximately $47 million of gas utility bonds approved in 2014, and also leverages approximately $3 million of local funding. Project examples include aging infrastructure replacement in order to maintain system reliability, regulator station security to maintain the security of those sites, and then also a district regulator station in the Magma Service Area to deliver service. In addition to the project types highlighted earlier in the water and wastewater program, we also have contractual obligations for jointly held facilities that the city utilizes. Included in the proposal is approximately $280 million of water utility bonds approved in 2014, and then remaining authorization from the 2010 authorization. Project examples include continued improvements in the area around the ASU Polytechnic Campus. There is a water line that will deliver water from the Central Arizona Project Canal to the future Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, and includes some of those utility lines in order to provide service to the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, and also from the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant to the service area, and then the design and construction of the Signal Butte Plant. The wastewater program includes approximately $177 million of wastewater bonds approved in 2014, and then some remaining authorization from 2010. Project examples include sewer lines in, at Warner Road, as well as Williamsville Road, and then the design and construction of the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant expansion.
So these pie charts show the relative size of each of the funding sources for the funded projects. You can see that approximately 2/3 of the funding sources in fiscal year 15-16, and also in the five-year plan, are utility revenue bonds. So that's the bulk, the majority. There's also general obligation bonds, grants, and some local revenues. Here you see the same breakout of funding sources by dollar amounts. Again, you can see utility revenue bonds is the majority there. Again, you can see utility revenue bonds is the majority there. These amounts do not include carryover. Carryover is when you budget something one fiscal year and it's not spent, but it's still needed the next fiscal year, so it's carried over from one annual budget to the next annual budget. So these numbers will go up before the budget is adopted because they don't include the carryover from the current fiscal year. A few examples of planned projects. These are in the five-year capital improvement program, but there is not funding yet identified. Additional fire apparatus, there's some apparatus funded, but there's also some that's beyond that. The Fire Station 205 rebuild, the Police Headquarters Facility remodel, additional public safety communications infrastructure, and the Southern Avenue and Staple intersection. Those are just examples of projects that are in the plan, but not yet, funding has not yet been identified. As assumptions for planning purposes in the capital improvement program, the city has assumed, or we have assumed, the next general obligation bond election would be in 2018 and the next utility revenue bond election would be in 2020. And the next-
I apologize. Can you say that one more time?
Sure. Yeah, the next bond elections, every so often the city holds bond elections, and we can only hold them in even years now, according to state law. So for planning purposes in the capital improvement program, the city is planning on holding the next general obligation bond election in 2018 and then the next utility bond election in 2020.
So Mayor and Counsel, that kind of puts us on that five-year schedule that we usually talk about when we come to bond elections. And so we're already, just as we meet with departments and discuss their needs for the future, we begin to identify those projects even now. I can tell you from a general obligation perspective, public safety, we're going to be really needing to look at our public safety communication systems. The larger infrastructure is getting to a point where that technology continues to evolve and change, and a lot of the systems we have are aging and dated, so to keep up with latest technology. So, and then of course, we'll be watching during that time and see about the growth out in the far east side, whether that will demand more fire stations or police substations also. So those are, we start now kind of beginning to identify things that we just, we know are going to have to be identified, met. Apparatus, for example, we know that there's going to be apparatus that'll be of the age we'll have to replace it. We know that the public safety communications will be a significant item that will have to be addressed during that period of time. So we're just starting to begin identifying those so that we're not the last-minute scrambling of the projects, and it allows us to go through the engineering, some of the pre-design, get better estimates on projects as we move forward. So just kind of giving you a head, kind of looking out into the future, that's when we expect those to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh.
And just a clarification, council always can choose to give direction to move ahead in 2016 if for some reason we believe any of the projects are of more critical importance, given the length of time that it takes to implement a capital project. So we're not limited to 2018, but if-
Just the even year.
Just has to be in the even years, I understand. So again, there could be, the council could decide to move ahead with a package next year if their project is deemed worthy of accelerated-
Yeah, so 2016. But are we a little-
We're limited to November. We have to hold bond elections in November, but we have had odd-year bond elections.
Okay. But a 2016, November 2016 election would require us to make decisions in July of 15? No, 16, sorry.
That's correct, yeah.
Getting my dates here. So yeah, that would be the timeline. So, and I will tell you, when you're doing capital projects, you can't, it's not prudent to be making decisions. We really need a full year before that July date to really scrub the projects down, identify their cost, the impact, and the operational impact, because as you saw earlier in this presentation, that we're recommending to council that because of difficulty getting access to property, as well as the difficulty we have in meeting the operational cost needs in our limited budget, we not only can, need to be able to build a project, we need to be able to operate it and maintain it. And that is what's putting a lot of pressure on our budget this year. And so you saw that we are recommending a few projects that have been identified in recent bond packages, but we're suggesting for either reasons, we can't get, the land isn't available to us at this point, or we right now don't have the resources to do the operations of those projects. We're asking those to be delayed, not eliminated, but just held off until the time we have the resources to maintain and operate those projects.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Mr. Richardson.
Just kind of trying to understand the flexibility in the system a little bit. I appreciate the backup materials where you have all the projects and you make a correlation between the expense and the operating costs in the spreadsheet, and it really helps us understand what we're spending into the future. But for example, in the parks, there's a story today about the Buckhorn Baths site not moving forward. There's a capital item on there this year for 2.4 million. So what kind of flexibility in the system do we have? What do we do with that? Do we just not purchase those bonds and do a project, or can we shift those other projects?
Thank you, thank you. Mayor, Counsel Richardson, very good question. So really our limitation for the use of the bonds, the council did a very good job of identifying specific projects, and we try to allocate a general budget to many, to many of those specific projects. But the authorization by the voters was really in the broader categories, and I think I'll need some help. We had a public safety category, we had a, and Parks was done by itself as a Parks, Parks Bond Program. So we really have, within all of those specific projects, we, as long as they're building within a park, they can be moved around. We try to be careful to identify from purposes that recognizing we do these projects over a five-year, three-to-five-year time period, we want to make sure that the projects that were done early, we keep them within a budget, so we're not going over budget on those. And then when we get to the last project in the five-year period and we say, you know, we don't have any money left because we used it on the earlier project. So part of that's why we create these preliminary budgets at the beginning to allocate for all the projects, so that as we go through the five-year period, those projects are done in the early timeframe and the ones done at the latter can have equal chance of being completed. So, but if we choose, there are projects that we, for whatever variety of reasons, we're not able to come to terms to provide, meet those project needs, then certainly we need to come back to the council, and I think we're going to be ready to do that, and identify how other dollars that may not be spent on a project can be reallocated to other projects. And we'll, and obviously, we're going to be needing to do that here pretty soon.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
Just one more note, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
The council action on the proposed five-year capital improvement program is currently scheduled for May 18th. So you would, on that date, you're scheduled to approve the five-year plan.
And that'll be, and we do that with the operating budget, because they are so tied together that we want to make sure that the operating costs for capital are included in our operating budget. So they'll be presented at the same, on the same day.
Right.
But you're asking for approval of the CIP, but, well, the council have had a chance to see the operating budget, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
And that will be presented on the 18th also, I think. The preliminary, tentative budget, whatever you call it, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
I just, again, going through this list, which I love spreadsheets, so it's fun to kind of scroll through this. I noticed that there's a line item within Parks Recreation Commercial Facilities for cemetery expansion, and I know that's a enterprise fund. So how does that handle with, is that, I know it's just rolled up with commercial facilities, but was that part of the Parks Bond funding process?
No, no. It's paid for out of that trust.
Out of that trust.
Out of the cemetery reserve fund.
Reserve fund.
Reserve fund.
All right. Thank you.
I can't tell you how many questions I have about the status of the Mesa Cemetery and when we're going to be built out is probably the wrong word, but I'm looking forward to getting, learning more about the expansion.
Well, the good news is, Mayor, last year, we purchased additional property, and so we are expanding it.
Yeah.
Yes, we, it's a, I'm not going to be like a prior person in your city, you've had a variety of savings on that.
Yeah, there's a great joke here.
It's a business that, we're going to be in business for a while. It's a growing industry.
Okay. Well, I think the public is interested in knowing more about that because it's a necessary and important part of our lives, so.
And we're expanding and trying to keep up.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you. I think we probably ought to just, one more time, thank the voters of Mesa for approving the last bond package, which was very significant, very important. Nearly all of that money goes underground into infrastructure that our children and grandchildren will benefit from. So thanks to the voters for trusting city government, and thanks to city staff for being worthy of that trust and being very thoughtful and deliberate in the way that you've planned for these important things that we need. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is information regarding the job order contracting projects. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on item number one, the Dobson Lake Erosion Control Project. In this hearing, last year I had an extensive tour of the course and the lakes and saw firsthand the challenge that Mark's staff and your staff have with this. And I'm just curious, I know we've redone Lake Two, now you're proposing to do Lakes One and Three, and I'm just curious as to what the construction schedule will be and if you would be able to provide information to our public information staff so that we can answer residents' questions about the nature of the project. These are very much needed projects, and I appreciate you bringing them forward.
Mayor, Council, it looks like we're aiming for April, trying to get through this busy season of high golf demand, and anticipating when we can shift our watering schedule right now, our watering out there is pretty frequent to keep the rye healthy and moving. So once we start to see that transition into Bermuda, we'll start to work on those lakes when we can have more flexibility with our watering schedule. So we'll start coordinating and going through some, the real design and detailed scheduling the middle of April, move forward, towards the end of April, beginning of May with construction, and you'll see a lot of activity out there over the summer months of June and July. And Vice Mayor, absolutely, we will work with Public Information Office to make sure residents are aware. We'll work with the Dobson HOA so they're aware of the project as well. And then, as well as obviously working with our staff and our contractor out there to make sure that the golfers and users are aware of the project and the ongoing improvements at the course.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on job order contracting projects? If not, next item is acknowledged receipts of minutes from boards and committees. It's been moved and seconded for approval. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is to hear reports on meetings and/or conferences attended. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, I want to thank Mesa Community College for hosting Mesa Police Department, which had a community debriefing program for the March 18th shooting incident. And I want to thank all the members of Mesa PD who came and answered all the questions that residents had, as well as the interested residents who came out. I think it was a very informative meeting, and I think it's a great example of using the community engagement process to keep citizens informed of what is happening.
Thank you. Any other comments on meetings? I know several, myself and several other council members were participating in a West Mesa CDC event last night, a neighborhood organizing event. I wish I could have been at the Mesa Police Department event at the college as well. But that was a great event too, well-attended. I think a lot of good things came out of the neighborhood organizing event last night, thanks to the council members who led the discussion groups in that meeting. Yes, Mr. Luna.
This past Tuesday, we had a special event over at ThinkSpot. We had Zul Bailey from the Mesa Arts Center, he's an artist and resident, and he provided a great opportunity for students. Students from Fremont and Westwood High Schools were able to receive a live feed emanating from ThinkSpot, which is really cool technology. We had students from Red Mountain High School Orchestra, and they got to witness and experience Zul Bailey. It was a wonderful experience for them. And tonight, many of those students will be able to go to the concert at the Mesa Arts Center. So it's a great way to use technology and to incorporate and build partnerships between the school district and the city of Mesa, and of course, the Mesa Arts Center. So I want to thank Sarah Prossary for her work on that, and as well as Maestha Marisa and all those that participated in this wonderful project.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, next item is scheduling of meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, there's a District Five Building Stronger Neighborhoods event. It'll be at the Red Mountain Community Church from 6:30 to 7:30, so we invite the residents from that area to come out. Our next council meeting will be Monday, April 6th. And we'll look in your time, because we will begin starting discussions with the, on the budget. We'll be starting to have those before each council meeting and on every Thursday study session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is to convene an executive session. Is there a motion to do so? And a second? All in favor, please say aye. We will now convene an executive session.